All those meeting to order, please rise for the proof of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be no gender adjustments and this meeting is being audiotaped. Approve minutes. I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the July school committee meeting and the September 4th negotiation subcommittee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
No, well Whitman? Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Motion carries. Reports. Jim, you're on.
Right, thank you. Jumping right into the fun stuff. Reports are in your package. Financial position, if any, please go. This is covering both the first two months of the fiscal year, July and August. Overall, cash balances, again, continue to be strong. A little over $6.9 million in all of our accounts. Down below, we've got about $765,000 in our OPEB account, which is, again, doing great with the interest in today's world. So that's strong. Page two is our revenue for the month of August and July. Pretty much, we do our billing the first of August for our member towns. And we did receive $1.3 million from our member towns during the course of August. The towns that did not pay us yet, they have paid us now since September. So I believe everybody's all accounted for. Little glitch with Hanover at the end of the year with all the people working remote. We sent the bills, it got kicked around town hall and they hadn't paid the bill, they hadn't paid us. But through the efforts of Mr. Hayward, reaching out to various people, that's all been satisfied. It was just a COVID-19 paperwork error with everybody working remote, nothing bad on that side. For other income, we have investment income, miscellaneous income. We had some insurance reimbursements that came through at the end of the year because of some damage and reimbursements on a processor. So we did get some miscellaneous income that we deposited back in July. And we are getting our Chapter 70 money as budgeted through the governor's budget that went through back in January. That may change in the future based upon when the state budget does get finalized for the year. But overall, a little over $2 million for our revenue for the first two months. Down below, we started showing the added district tuition for all of our towns that we have added students in. We don't bill that till November 1st. Again, the student countdowns of October 1st is the official DESI student count. So we'll wait till that October number, the date passes, and then we'll solidify our attendance through all the outside towns. And then we'll do the billing for them based upon, again, we bill them based upon a set rate that is given to us by the state. There are some add-ons for special education services and that is done by Katie Berry and her staff and everything looks good. Next page is our expenditures for the two months ending August 31st. Again, not a lot of things that are out of the ordinary. We do on line five, kind of retirement. We do make a one lump sum payment to Plymouth County for all of our union employees for retirement. They give us the option for two payments, but they give us a discount if we pay it in July. So we just pay the whole thing in July. We do have, back to line three, unemployment. Again, with unemployment going on, we had a lot of people that filed for unemployment over the course of the COVID. And a lot of that based upon the filing dates and everything that went on, delays. So we're finally getting the bills for the unemployment. What happened was that the state is picking up half of the cost of all the unemployment claims that we're getting based upon the COVID items and so forth. And again, we are contesting one. I think we're still contesting one person. A teacher that retired that went to work someplace else and then he got laid off. And that we're getting charged for his unemployment. So we were contesting that one. Other than that, we pay our insurances lump sum. So item down to line 35, school insurances. There were some changes again when we did the budget back last January. Charlie Esteban Chamberlain gave us his best guess. Again, rates changed, coverage has changed. So that number is a little higher than the budget number. We'll deal with that in a second with the budget transfers. Overall, spending about $1.5 million. Our payroll number, jumping all around here, sorry. Line one, $412,000. That does not include any teacher salary. Again, the teachers, they get paid out as of June 30th. So we do pay the teachers over the summer. But those payments relate to the expenses going back to fiscal 20, what ended in June. So the only payroll that's listed here on the report are the administrators and other custodians and other staff. Overall, it's looking good. There has been a lot of repairs, I'm sure Tom will cover a lot of work going on in the building. So the repair number is high. But again, that's expected through all the summer work. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. I'd ask for a motion to approve the treasures report.
What are we going to approve?
Abington and second, by Hanson. Any discussion on the treasures report?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Have you submitted any bills to the towns as far as dealing with COVID-19?
Yes.
That Plymouth County would...
Yes. Well, again, the CARES Act reimbursement. Plymouth County got a chunk of money, $92 million, I believe. And we have to go back, we have compiled lists. We did a first round of billing to our member towns through Plymouth County.
Right.
And it was early stages. We'd only spent like $8,000 at that point. So we did do a round of billing and we have to bill each individual town separately. And then the town will go back to Plymouth County and request reimbursement as it goes down the line. Cohasset isn't in Plymouth County, so we're dealing with them separately. And also based upon guidance that Tom's had from various people and again, the reading of all the emails and directives. We can also bill our added district towns as well. So we have a calculation of all of our attendants. So we will go back and we will be sending bills to Pembroke and Halifax and Pimpson and all that. I think Tom might have an update on that a little bit later. We've also applied through FEMA. Again, that was a suggestion from the various leadership of some of the agencies that we were members of. So we did set up an account for FEMA to, and again, they directed us, "Hey, go to FEMA first and then if you don't get it from FEMA, then go to Plymouth County." I believe the latest number that we've spent on COVID-related expenses up through yesterday was about $179,000 through all different aspects of it. And we did get a grant from the state for $56,000, I believe, for COVID-related expenses as well.
Yeah, we have a CARES Act grant for about $56,000. And we also received a technology grant for about $62,000. So the numbers that Jim is referencing, we will be able to offset some of that from a grant. And we also got a small amount of money, about $1,800, which is directly tied to any Norfolk County students that we have. So in any event, between direct grants to the school district and seeking reimbursement as Jim described, we will continue to seek reimbursement for as much as we can. And for most of this, there's a sunset of the end of this calendar year unless there's a federal extension. So if we're going to be doing any targeted purchasing, like our technology purchasing, we've got that mapped out. If we're going to do any other purchasing of supplies such as PPE and we want it to make sure that it comes under the reimbursement window, we will make all such purchases before the end of the calendar year and then seek reimbursement as Jim described.
On that note, I believe that Plymouth County commissioners are looking to close out a lot of the towns as far as getting reimbursement. I know Frank, our town administrator, was trying to talk to the Plymouth County saying, "You're too quick, too quick. I mean, then schools got to come back in, you're just out." But Plymouth County is looking to either get it all cleaned up and get it ready so any money left over can go into whatever they want. I don't know.
I was on a webinar on Friday with Jay Steller, who was at DESI. One of the presenters has a relationship with the town of Port Blaine. And he mentioned that through all the enumerations, that Port Blaine's number was like $5 million. And he didn't think Port Blaine could spend $5 million. He thinks that, his opinion was, a lot of this is all refunded from the government in that there'll be plenty of money left at the end of the day. As Tom mentioned, the Plymouth County and the FEMA numbers are, you know, the sunset of December 31st. I think the beauty of getting the grants from the state, those are not headlined on December 31st. They carry over. And again, the challenges are buying Chromebooks for the students. Everybody in the country is buying Chromebooks and everything's backordered and they can't make them fast enough. So we're trying to get as much as we can, as soon as we can, into the buildings.
Because I know you have to spend the money, you have to pay, you know, order it, spend the money, pay for it, and then apply for it. And then the commissioners will look at that and say, "Okay, that is related. We're okay with that."
Yes.
It's a process. I'm quite surprised that they're going that route.
And it's very cumbersome too, because we also have to make copies of all the invoices.
Right.
And make eight copies and send them to all of our towns, to warrant folks, which are very important behind it. We have the same copies of the warrant signatures on the paperwork as well. So yeah, there's a lot of paperwork chuggling. And again, I'd like to thank, take it up, thank Janine in our office. Janine started when Sylvie retired a few months back. And she's been right on top of things and doing a great job with, you know, again, she's been quarterbacking the nuts and bolts paperwork aspect and keeping track for Tom and to be able to figure out what has been sent, spent, kind of allocated based upon percentages of students and so forth. But it is a time-consuming, but it's very worthwhile.
Didn't one of the towns get their Chromebooks thrown back out and they couldn't? I think, yeah, or the defense of the state sent the Chromebooks. What else was it?
There was a report about some Chromebooks that were stopped by customs because they, the manufacturer of them, I think, made revitalized child labor or something. So there were some issues that stopped it. In general, they're just production shortfalls. We have some Chromebooks that are on order that we're expecting very soon. But many, many districts are in the same situation.
I also wanted to mention that about the PPE going forward, because we're kind of, it's open for business now. We'll be able to gauge, you know, how quickly we go through masks and whatever else is required. And so it's going to give you sort of a ballpark idea of when it gets closer to the end of the year, we're going to need $6 million worth of masks or whatever, you know?
That's, George, that's exactly right. And based on some state guidance, we can calculate the frequency. So our school nurse, LPN custodians, and the level of PPE they need. We've got three months' worth of three ply masks based on student population. As you just said, we will track that use. We're seeing students doing what we've asked, they're bringing in their own mask. I saw a student at dismissal today, one of the straps of his mask broke. I was able to go onto one of our buses and just get a spare mask. So we've got spare masks in targeted spots. And we've got a way of distributing them that will allow us to track it. So that's exactly, that's exactly the approach we're taking. So we're not, we're not quite flat-footed or we're not running out of sanitizer or otherwise.
Yeah, cool.
Sorry, apologize for being tardy. Just had a question. The Chromebooks, does every, are we updating all the students have them? Or can they be using iPads? Do we have iPads from before?
Our arrangement, what our tech department has arranged is for every student to have either a Chromebook or a laptop.
Okay.
When this shipment of Chromebooks comes in, we will swap out the laptops. Though, we have laptops largely because they function in vocational programs that require us to download software. But we're using them, we're assigning them. So we are not sharing devices and everyone is being issued, everyone is being issued one. Given the way the school calendar is, we may have some, we may be a little bit short. And when I say a little bit, I'm probably talking under 20. But our tech department is confident that no one's going to be missing out. So again, continued support from this committee for technology over the years positioned us well to be able to withstand a shortfall in device production, you know, worldwide. We placed an order in the summer. Again, by the time we meet next, when we meet next month, this will be, this won't be a topic. Our shipment was going to be in on, I think, the last week of September, I think. So I'm feeling, I'm feeling good about that.
Okay, anything else?
Just about the Chromebooks. I mentioned there's some sort of state guideline on how to clean the thing?
Yes. So the first step is, we're not going to share them. The second step is, we're advising that they can be wiped down.
Yeah.
And that takes the burden off of the school and off of the teachers on a regular basis. But yes, there is state guidance so that we're, yes, we're not dumping some spring water on the keyboard to make it nice and shiny, no way.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, all those in favor of the treasures report? Aye. Unanimous. Motion carries. Budget transfers.
On the back page, the final page, you have a list of budget transfers. Mainly, it's all insurances, again, based on, workers' comp is always a moving target based upon our experience quantification from year to year. Again, every time you have an injury or a claim, that counts against you and your experience quantification goes up. So we've got a request for $13,700 into workers' comp, a multi-parallel account which covers all of our buses and other liabilities. $11,800 and $1,200 for our transfer students. That was, as well, because they had to change carriers. And the transfer coming out of the electricity budget, which we're pretty confident based upon production in the situable field, I mean, not the well field, the solar field, we should be able to be under budget with that number.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Whitman, second. Hanson. Any discussion on the budget transfers? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Chairman has nothing from the chair tonight. Subcommittees, there are no subcommittee reports. Superintendent Director, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, hopefully, we've been keeping you well informed as to our, from our last meeting when we developed and you supported our return to school plan. Today was, by definition, our first regular, not so regular day of school, which was preceded by two days of orientation. So our kids started coming back in the building on Monday. Every student had one day of in-school orientation for a few hours and then the opposite day was remote. We brought in two grades and then two grades. Prior to September 14th, we had seven days of staff training, which included across-the-board training on all new protocols and procedures, all safety protocols, as well as providing a heavy dose of time for staff to continue to learn how to develop digital content. We have an eye toward, at some point, if we are in an all-remote situation, that all of our teachers, academic and technical, will be ready to continue to teach their students, as they attempted to from March to June, but with much more structure and engagement. We're no longer in that emergency scramble situation that everybody in the country was, at least in the Northeast during that time. So I'm hearing great things and seeing great things about what teachers are producing. So our hybrid model began today. And again, as we know, we have an academic and a shock week. That fundamentally hasn't changed. What we like to say to describe it simply is that in a 10-day period, most of our students are in the building seven days out of 10. Most students go to shock every day and all students come to school two days out of five for their academic week. So for instance, a typical senior would come to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays of their academic week and they would follow their schedule. They would have three in-person classes and then a remote class taught inside the building. On Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, they'd be at home, following the exact same schedule. And then for the shock week, that senior, unless, if they're not on co-op, that senior would be coming in for every shock day. The exceptions on the shock week include computer info tech, allied health, MET2, and graphics. Because of their heavy computer element to their programs, they are coming in on an alternating day model. What this model did for us, it allowed us to maximize the capacity of the building so that we have buses, bus drivers, who are able to bring our kids on a staggered schedule. Another layer of complexity, but it's working, is we bring our older kids in on their shock week at 7:40 and they leave at 1:00. And for everyone else, they come in at 9:05 and they leave at 2:25. Our buses are cleaned after every bus run. So everything that we've implemented in our plan, we've been able to begin to pressure test for two days of orientation. And then today certainly was our, again, our first full day of staggered schedules, lunches six feet apart at desks, teachers teaching in person and also remotely. So if I'm a math teacher today, I might have had an in-person class with some students in front of me and a remote class as well. So I'm happy to report from my vantage point that the plan is being implemented. Our administrators, our guidance counselors, our support staff are all pulling together to make sure that all of the safety protocols that we consider priorities are being met. And that includes small but important things like monitoring all bathrooms. Our administrators developed a QR code system so that when a student wants to use the bathroom, their camera will take a picture of a QR code that will log when they're leaving the classroom. There's a QR code on the bathroom door that they will also take a picture of and then they will QR code when they get back to class. This keeps a running record of the traffic of students. And it's just, for me, that's just one example of how we're trying to keep everybody safe and keep everybody as engaged as possible. I'll certainly turn it over now to, for Sandy and Mark to highlight a few other elements of what we've started and would welcome your questions after that.
Thank you, Tom. So Tom's right. We've been communicating, there's a silver lining to every dark cloud. And for us, the silver lining, in my opinion, is our communications. We were always great communicating with our parents and our families, but we have really raised that over this time. So we have, we started having more or less weekly meetings with our parents, at night Zoom meetings. We will continue those into the fall. Sorry, George, I don't want to talk to you now. We will continue those into the fall, which allows the parents to simply get on with, some of the administrators, not all of them, all the time, but they can ask questions. We use the Google Chat. It's been very, very helpful for us and our families have been incredibly supportive. We have the Cadillac version of hybrid learning right now. Three-quarters of our students are in the building every day. I don't know of another district that's even close to that. You talk to parents, you talk to our own staff members, what their other kids are doing in other districts. We are the best right now. And that goes with all the support we're getting, Mr. Hickey at the top with his leadership, the team over the summer putting in long hours, our core working group that Tom has mentioned before, made up of staff members and leadership that have gone through and worked all this out, our bus drivers who are working extra hours doing all these routes we've talked about, our paras, our jack-of-all-trades who have gone from being bus monitors to working the kids, to washing bathrooms, to working in the lunchrooms, they're everywhere. Our teachers who have been building plexiglass stations like behind Mr. Hayward. All of them playing an important role, our maintenance staff going around and cleaning high-contact areas. Group three going around cleaning every bus after every trip. It truly is a community and I want to compliment the parents who have stepped up. A lot of those families are driving their children to school, which has made this possible for us. I'm going to let Sandy talk about what our remote learning time looks like and then we'll take those.
Jump in for a second. I received an unsolicited compliment to you, you and your staff and everyone. Freshmen parents are blown away by the openness, the information highway you guys have developed. They said it took 90% of the anxiety of sending their child to a new school. Not just going into high school, but a new high school and a new school. They are so happy they have made that decision just from the openness and the help you people have given them. So please pass that on. I'm sure it's guidance, I'm sure it's your department and yours. It was phenomenal. I was like, "Good news."
If I may, Mark.
Yes.
I work with a gentleman who is a graduate from this school, who has a son who just entered the ninth grade.
I know who we're talking about.
Right. And he watched your online and speaking and everything and he is really impressed.
Well, it's not just me, it's the team, it's everybody involved.
Yeah.
Okay. This is really a team that spent many hours going above this summer, putting this model together and making it work. So, okay.
And he was also impressed when he came here to see the school, how the upkeep of the school...
It's changed a lot since that young man was just coming here, almost 20 years ago.
And he was just impressed that, he said, you know, things have changed, but school's in great shape.
Yeah, which is good. He's a graduate of 2003.
Mark, before you talk, could you just talk about breakfast and lunch program?
Yeah, those are, I'll finish my agenda then. So we have rolled out just today, we got confirmation earlier this week, all schools across the state, they have to sign in and do things. Being a regional school, we had to jump through a couple of extra hoops. But all students have free lunch and breakfast through the end of the year if they want it. Okay? So they don't have to come in, they don't have to pay, they don't have to put anything on their myschoolbut.com account. They have a meal ready for them. Every cafeteria entree, every day, there's a hot lunch, there's a deli sandwich, and there's a slice of pizza meal every day. So the kids have three options every day. Everything is pre-made. There's no standing, waiting for them to prepare stuff. Everybody's six feet apart as they move through the line. And we have three options in the breakfast program as well. So we rolled that out. Parents also have the option of signing up for lunch and breakfast on the days that their student is remote. They have to go onto the school website. And so if the student is remote on Wednesday, they go on Tuesday. They fill it out by 10:00 a.m. And the cafeteria staff will have a lunch and a breakfast ready for that child to take before they leave school today. So they will have their school lunch with them remotely at home. So that's another great thing. The other thing I want to mention is we just received in our flu shots for our students. So we rolled that out today too. Mrs. Laurel and our new LPN, Ms. Tressley, will be working with our students. There's a sign-off form for parents. We do not need to know. All we need to know is they have insurance or they have Mass Health. We don't need any numbers, we don't need any money. It's just when they go to bill the company, all of this is free for students. Our staff ones will be coming in at the end of the month. We will also have those for all the students too. So we'll have flu shots and we have the free lunch program running through the end of the year. If there are parents who are already on free and reduced lunch, If there are parents who are already on free and reduced lunch, they need to make sure that they're doing their paperwork because on January 1, all this goes away, and they need to make sure everything is up to date. Mr. Mahoney.
Yes, sorry. Are the, all the lunches and lunches and breakfasts drawn away?
Like the containers?
Are they used in trays?
Or not used in trays, everything is a disposable container.
Like a throwaway container?
Yeah, a clear plastic container.
Okay.
Other questions on everything I talked about before this folder takes over? Like I said, it's really, today was one day, but it was a very good day in this building. I had one staff member I talked to, when she was leaving today, she said, "It's the best day I've had in so long." It's been six months that she's been in front of the class. She had a really good day today. She was excited, the kids were excited, they were engaged. Our kids want to be here, after six months, they want to be in school as much as we want to be in school with them, so it's been great.
Sandy.
Hello, everyone. I would like to put a name to, if not a face, a name to our core work group members, which is a committee organized by Mr. Hickey to support the administrative staff over the summer, and you've referred to it several times, and their role was to hear our ideas, squash those that were just way out there, and support us in understanding and sharing communications across the staff about what we were thinking. And so the idea is designed by the leadership team, often led by Mr. Hickey, was vetted by this team, supported by this team, adjusted by this team, which has really allowed us to, in a place where our third day in the building, we're reflecting and tweaking and not panicking. There's a lot of really good things happening. Adjustments to be made, but really good systems happening, and a lot of hard work by a lot of people, really over the last six months. So I would like to name Kristin Mack a boy from our allied health department, and I'm going to name the administrators as well. Crystal Boosie, our IT director, we're tirelessly, Ruth Drake, our bus driver manager, Jerry Shaw, science teacher, Rob, Bob Mello, our dean of students, Mr. Aubrey, who's been tireless, Katie Berry, our special ed director, Bob Morehead, our maintenance director, Craig Davis, history teacher, Carolyn Rupousky, graphic visual design instructor, Keith Oil, vocational coordinator, Deb Berry, our food and beverage manager, who has done a great job. Lunches were spectacular, the kids, they were a little weird, we need to put some music on in the cafeteria, they were a little too quiet, and we're working on that, it's a little quiet, which normally out in the cafeteria, my god, it's so noisy, but they're up today and yesterday, it was a little quiet. They're getting better. Collette Laurel has been outstanding in her messaging to parents, students in faculty, and her understanding of what is expected. Tom Zohore, guidance counselor, and Tony Gorgor, English teacher, really did an outstanding job in supporting us over the summer, and are continuing to play a role in supporting the foundations for remote learning and for supporting us as we adjust our practices and improve them, so a great thanks to them. I will say that the highlight for me was earlier this week for the orientations, upperclassmen were really early.
Yes, they were. It was 7:00.
So that just tells you how excited and invested in our school our students are and become and stay. So that was really exciting, and they were really pretty cute outside, I'm talking to them, all of them. They probably don't want me to call them cute, but they really would want to talk to. So for remote learning, I wanted to just give you a little bit about what we mean when we say remote learners. So when we have remote learners, these are students who have chosen, for any number of reasons, to work their academic schedule from home or their whole schedule from home. So they're remote learners for just academic week, and there are some remote learners who are fully remote, they don't come to school at all. What I would like to start by saying is that we have fewer than 25 students in total choosing to go remote because of our ability to explain to our families what we've done to co-work students and keep them safe in small arenas, and help them understand, and they want to be here to be a part of vocational learning. So, and fewer than, unless in a handful who are fully remote. The students are taking a blend of courses offered by South Shore Tech teachers and Egenuity instructors. Egenuity is a DESI-approved online provider that we've used in the past to support students who needed to make up a course that we didn't offer if they were a transfer student or if they wanted enrichment course in any area, often in foreign language, they'll take advantage of that. So the provider we're already very familiar with, what we've been able to do that I feel I'm satisfied with and hope that will reap rewards for attendance for our fully remote learners, is that even our remote courses offered by the Egenuity platform are supported in real time by a South Shore staff member. So those students follow a regular school day, even while fully remote. They report to school with an SSD staff member at the start of their school day, in every instance, both for academic and their vocational cycle. So a question you might be asking yourself is then, how do you fill a vocational schedule for a remote learner? You look to strand four, employability, strand five, management, strand six, technology skills, and strand two, vocational education. So there's a real blend of options, and we try to tailor it to each fully remote student. So some fully remote students have the opportunity to be in a program that is partially remote already, and they're supplemented by a specific course that suits them. The other students are asked to take a full complement of courses, seven courses, excuse me, eight courses that mirrors a comprehensive high school. So they take, I said eight, I meant seven. They take four during the academic week, and then they take three additional courses to supplement their vocational time. So they would take a course in a management area, introduction to business, they would take a course in technology, Microsoft Office, they may take a class in specifically a course that is tailored to their vocational program, such as agri-science or engineering or manufacturing design. So they'd be a blend of courses that's the right fit for that individual student. So that's how we attack the supports for students who are going fully remote. And I will end by saying that last year, I was particularly proud of the work that our staff did in the area of attendance. Charged by Mr. Hickey to improve attendance, the student support team, which includes the student services team, guidance counselors, the school nurse, among a whole other folks, really improved our protocols and our structure for supporting strong attendance. That's going to go a long way in supporting our remote and hybrid learners this year, and we're already working to put in place effective practices to support them being in school, in addition to ensuring that every single day, every single one of our students starts their school day with South Shore Educator. So enough talking. Ready for questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How are we handling juniors and seniors who are going out on call?
Juniors and seniors who are eligible to go out on call are going out on call.
And not an issue with fires, where they're working, you know, where they're out there, I don't know, you have to wear masks?
There's extra, they have to, there's extra COVID stuff that, when we go out and do a check on a company, we go through and make sure all the safety, all the vouchers there, there's an extra step now, with everything else in the new normal. They check for COVID, they check for masks, they take for distancing between workstations, all that stuff is covered before the student ever walks in.
I know students have to work in restaurants and things like, yes, but I'm thinking of working, you know, like automotive or something like that, it happened.
We have a student who's going to stop working at Janelle Ford's, we had to go down and check out the stations and how everything else.
Yeah, just curious.
Well, yeah, what about some kind of security for the teachers? Like if somebody, the students have an inappropriate background or an inappropriate mask, is there a way for teachers to block that out, like GoGuardian or whatever they may have?
You've got it.
You've got it.
So right now, we are working on training staff and then students on GoGuardian. It's an app that will be installed on all student computers. Teachers will be able to see if a student is off tab, if they are watching Netflix, they'll be able to monitor all of their electronic activities on that computer. In addition, the Google Educator platform has been very responsive to the needs of educators, and they're not doing any, they credit the pace that we're looking for, but they are working on providing the additional tools that you'll see on other platforms, like being able to remove a student from your chat fully. So some of those tools are in the works on our Google Educator platform as well.
Yeah, that's great, because the teachers can block them out for the day.
Right.
If they do something out, like I just thought that you could explain a little bit about, you know, how, what the teacher has to do with that, they have to help with the discipline of remote, not just attendance, but, you know, inappropriate behavior, whatever.
We do have discipline protocols in place that are specifically responding to COVID, right? So first is the wearing of masks, so students are expected to wear masks 100% of the time. When you're, and if a student is defiant and unwilling to wear a mask, they will not be able to stay on our school property. Students who are unable to wear their mask properly, after many remindings, will be subject to progressive discipline, so those things have been communicated to the staff and students, and will continue to happen. The same is true for remote learning. We have remote learning guidelines that have been articulated to parents, students, and teachers, what we expect of students, to see how their behavior in a remote environment. They are graded weekly in every single class on their remote learning behavior as part of their work habits. Every department has developed a work habit rubber based on those remote learning expectations will be part of their grade weekly. If it gets beyond a point of infraction that could be impacted by a grade and it needs to be disciplined, it will be.
Google, I think, has done a great job in updating all this.
They have.
Yeah, we've come a long way since March and April. Not just us, everybody has, so.
Thank you, Mark and Sandy. Thank you, members of the committee, great, great questions. The only other item I have is what I would typically bring to you in September, which is, it's Document 5, it's just a rough timeline of, believe it or not, preparing for a fiscal '22 budget. Essentially, this memo, I've made one adjustment, which is like with everything else, it's going to be slightly delayed in the earlier stages. I'm not going to go and ask our department heads to start brainstorming fiscal '22, where I might say we could start that conversation in September and October. We will still end up with a presentation that I'll bring to you all at our December meeting, but we'll just compress the timeframe in October and November for budget building. There's a lot that still has to settle in for the state budget, as we know. We do have a Chapter 70 commitment for a portion of this fiscal year being level-funded. We await further direction from the legislature as to whether that's going to be a commitment that lasts all year. But nevertheless, we will begin the process and have a proposed fiscal '22 budget for you, an initial presentation in December, further review and public meeting, and certification by February, which is again our normal process. At your stations, you'll find a list of the meetings coming up as we typically do, and you'll note, we noted on the document that the January meeting has been dovetailed with the day that the governor's budget number would come out. And from that, we would be able to then bring projected assessment numbers, et cetera, et cetera. So other than not asking our, we want our folks to focus on a successful start to the year, an extra month won't be a deal breaker. You'll still see a detailed presentation in December. So that's the fiscal '22 budget timeline, Mr. Chairman, and that's the end of my report.
Okay. On the new business, we have the superintendent's annual goals, which are in your packet.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the benefit, the goals that I'm proposing for this year, as you might suspect, have a lot to do with the very unique year that we're going to be living in. So one of the goals that the remote learning subcommittee has placed as a priority is that we'll have 100% of our staff showing competency in those areas of remote learning that our faculty-driven subcommittee has come up with. Our teachers are training their colleagues, our administrators are supporting those teacher leaders, and we need everybody to scale up their ability, and we've started quite well. So that's a definite goal. That is not something that is limited to seven days of training in September, and then it's all fixed. It's an ongoing thing, it's an ongoing process to support teachers' technical capacity. Another goal is something you've seen from me in the past, which is that 100% of our students who are eligible will earn a third-party credential. We still need to train students toward licensure hours, certificates, and industry-recognized credentials, so that's a second priority. And then the third priority, which is overarching, is simply that we will implement and revise when necessary the return-to-school plan that we've worked so hard on, to ensure that that plan is implemented faithfully. And if things change, if facts change, if we reflect and we have to make adjustments that will be nimble and flexible to do so. So that will be, those will be the points of emphasis that I will report back to you on in January and in May.
Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve Tom's goals for 2020. Abington, the co-heiress, seconded. Any discussion on the goals? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Emergency policy approval. The face coverings.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would ask for your approval of this policy. What we would need from the committee would be first, a, there would be a, the chairman would ask for a motion to suspend the policy, which is to have a two-month reading of a new policy, that this is essentially, it's a time-sensitive item, you have the right to suspend that policy. So that would have to happen first, and then I would ask for your support. This is a policy that was authored by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and has been reviewed by our attorney. It's something that I have sent along to you probably in the late summer and then very recently. And it gives us a policy governing face coverings, which is something that the MASC is recommending all school districts have on their books. I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion, Rockland, to suspend the two-month policy approval process. Rockland, seconded by Whitman. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Again, unanimous. All right, motion carries. Now a motion to approve the policy.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Rockland and Whitman, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Again, unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We have a graphics department has received a donation of a...
Sewing machine?
Sewing machine. A PFAFF sewing machine. And try to pronounce that. Transmit value of $440, given to us by a resident of East Bridgewater. Motion to accept. Out on Hanson and Abington. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Warrants. Warrants, 2A, 2B, 3, 3A, 3B, 4, 4A, 4B, 5 and 5A. So. Okay, second, you made the motion, seconded by Whitman. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Any requests for action?
I just want to add, I have not received anything, I usually go to the November conference, school committee conference, I've been getting letters from them, it's almost like they're still hoping that possibly they would be able to do it, I don't know.
Thank you, Dan, for bringing that up, if I may. The research that I did indicated that MASC and MASSS will not be having a conference. However, they will have what's called a general assembly, which I'm assuming will be remote. So one of the items I'll ask the chairman for next month's agenda will be to appoint a delegate to the general assembly.
And is it Zoom?
That's my presumption, Dan, that they're not doing anything in person, but they still want to conduct annual business, and that we have in the past either appointed our delegate at the September or October meetings.
Right. That's what I heard too. So I mean, I'd be willing to sit and do it unless somebody else wants to do it, but have you had to see any of the...
Resolutions and such?
Yeah, they're looking to...
Same here.
Some of them are.
We'll put that on the next month's agenda. We'll put that on next month's agenda.
Okay. Number eight, motion to adjourn.
Motion, with all due respect.
Whitman, seconded by Abington. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. Okay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.